July 26, 2023. Welcome to everybody that's here. I know we've got a public hearing. I know you can't see me, but here I can't see you guys either. So we have a public hearing at 1:15. We'll get to that at that time. But in the meantime, we start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in a moment of silent prayer.
Stand if you can.
The Pledge of Allegiance typified the United States of America and the United Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will move that we excuse Commissioner Reese from the meeting.
Second. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
I'm also going to move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to public comments. I do have a card from Hayman Akli Lu. Akli Lu, yes, welcome. Come on up to the podium. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
And it's in the thousands, so it's getting hard, right, for just private citizens themselves to take this on. And I just wanted to ask Hamilton County, because that is where most of them are being refuged or in Fairfield, if there is any kind of support that can be given, also advertising Welcome Corp. a little bit more for our immigrants, so that way they can take advantage of that, because it's kind of going word to mouth, you know. So that's what I wanted to speak about and bring attention to.
Yes, thank you for being here. I really appreciate it. We have actually been involved in this in a little bit, trying to work with Catholic charities, with Compass, and with other organizations that are moving around in the immigration space to try to figure out a way to be as welcoming as possible and assist as much as we can. And so we are trying to get the 513 relief bus out there to assist the community in any way we can. It's limited as the county, but there are things we can do to assist. And so I'm going to ask you to get together with Chris Harding, who's with my office, and give him your information so that we can keep you in the loop, and then gain insight from your ideas as well as what more we could be doing.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Adumas?
So I'd like to just ask you, the organization that's working right now, what's the name of the organization?
So it's basically, it's a lot of organizations. So there's the International Center for Greater Cincinnati, which I am a part of. There's Cincinnati Compass. There's, who else, Refugee Connect. It's basically the who's-of-who of Cincinnati organizations that are working on this and that are in that email. So Samantha Cirls, Brian Wright, Ibrahim Amidu, so, and on and on. There are names that I forgot to mention. Yes, I was out of the country, that's why, and I came back, and I just wanted to focus on that now and bring attention. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
All right, are there any folks for public comments on the internets? No? All right, well, we will then move forward to comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple things. Of course, we had the Zoo Levy Public Hearing last week. The Emergency Management Agency had their executive meeting, and I attended that along with Commissioner Dreehouse. I attended the Black Music Walk of Fame, and there was lots of people there, lots of activity, lots of excitement. And so I was glad that we drew all those people to our area, and I'm sure we'll continue to do that. I had a meeting with the Hamilton County Auditor, Richard Kelly, who wanted to discuss with me as they look at property taxes and what their vision is as we look at reappraisals of homes. I attended the Hamilton County Land Reutilization Board meeting, and they are very active looking at affordable housing and just trying to secure certain areas to be able to really work with us in our vision that we have, and they also have a vision of what they want to do with housing. So I'm really excited about the housing vision that they have and that we also have. And then I attended, I'm sure Commissioner Dreehouse, you'll talk more about it, today the Commission on Women and Girls had a press conference on period products in schools and how the state is now supporting us. And so I'll leave that for you. And our Beyond Your Imagination idea initiative that I brought forth is continuing to include more foster children and adoptive children to go to different activities. I just sent some information about the Nutcracker in December, and so we can be in front of it and get some tickets for that. If you see any activities that you think would be good for our foster children to attend, please let me know, or either Michael Patton, who's the director of JFS. And as I said, I believe the last time we had our meeting, 500 baseball tickets were donated to BYI. We'll be moving forward and getting those young people involved in that. And our Inspire Initiative that I brought forth in January, if you are a qualified applicant, you probably have been notified by now, and help is on the way to help you with the groups that you have out in the community. And that would end my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I've got a few things. First, I want to recognize an intern that's in the room. It's Max Mittinger. He is from Germany, has been sent over to view our meeting. Judge Lubers thought it would be an interesting thing for him to do. I hope that has proven true, but welcome, glad to have you here. I was going to mention the press conference this morning. The Commission on Women and Girls, a number of years ago, talked about trying to provide no-cost access to period products in schools. And a number of years later, we finally got that accomplished. It was a provision in the state budget that passed earlier this year, and so we had a press conference to make sure that folks are aware that we will be providing no-cost period products for girls in our schools, their public schools, the chartered non-public schools, and this is a statewide requirement. And so there was $5 million put into the state budget for this initiative, and just thrilled that the Commission on Women and Girls was able to help lead the charge. Mary Mountie was a huge piece of this. I don't see her, but shout out to Mary Mountie for pushing this initiative forward, along with the students, especially from the Commission on Women and Girls, and some of our partners in Cleveland and Columbus. Secondly, I had the opportunity to go to the White House a couple of days ago. President Biden announced his initiative to provide mental health parity for folks that struggle with mental health, and treat it as if they had a broken bone or something else that would be covered by insurance. Mental health needs are growing, as we all know, and we're trying to figure out a way to provide parity to those that are in need. So I was honored to represent the Commission at the White House at that announcement. And also, we had gone to the National Association of Counties Conference in Austin, learned, talked a lot about immigration reform, actually, economic development. We talked about addiction and diversity, equity and inclusion. So it was a good conference, and a number of folks from the state of Ohio attended that conference, and it was a good learning experience. Also, something to announce, the Solid Waste Plan that we voted on a number of months ago is near ratification. I think we've got like 97% of the 49 jurisdictions, 48 jurisdictions that have signed on. So that's good news, and we are poised to get that thing passed and send it up to the state, so that's wonderful. And I did want to mention that I missed the kickoff for the Black Music Walk of Fame. I was in Austin at the conference, but heard it was a wonderful event, and I did get a walkthrough of the facility, and a shout out to Eric Beck, who did a really fantastic, not Eric Beck, I'm sorry. No, but the quality of the materials is wonderful, the highlighting of the musicians was wonderful. It was Phil Beck, obviously, that was the spearhead for this, but it really is a good facility, and I hope folks have a chance to go down and take a look. So that's all I have. We are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Chair, if I could just, also, I was just about thanking our staff for all the tirelessly nights, not sleeping and all that at the Walk of Fame, and I just thank them so much for all they've done. But I also wanted to compliment you, the Commission on Women and Girls has, they've tackled so many important issues, and I just want to thank you for your leadership on that commission.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. I will pass that along to the Commission on Women and Girls. So Jeff, I'm going to go to you, County Administrator Aludo. We've got a hearing soon, but let's start rolling through the byleaves.
Sure, I think we can get through most of these, Commissioner. First of all, just a quick byleave comment, just as the board knows from my weekly report, at the meeting on August 10th, the board will be approving the annual information statement for the county. That is due to be filed as a condition of our bond covenants. That's due to be filed on August 15th. I just wanted to let the board know that you'll have a draft circulated to you in advance of that, just so you can read it. If you have any questions, please ask me myself or Assistant Administrator Bergen. In terms of, we have a couple of byleave items on today.
Let me go ahead and do byleave number one.
Certainly.
Because it's related to the Commission on Women and Girls. So we are changing the location and the time of a meeting on August 10th. The meeting will be held in the evening at 6 o'clock at the Sharonville Municipal Building. It is to accommodate the swearing-in of the new Commission on Women and Girls, making sure that the girls and the women who, you know, work and go to school during the day can attend. So again, August 10th, 6 o'clock in Sharonville. So that is byleave number one. So I'm going to move that we approve of byleave number one.
Second. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
And then the second one is a resolution related to our appointment to the port of Greater Cincinnati Development Authority. We are recommending Rance Duke. He has been serving on the port for a number of years. He's a valued member of that organization, and so I will move to approve of byleave two to reappoint Rance Duke.
Second. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Byleave number three in your packet, this is an, what we call an intergovernmental agreement. This is an agreement between the county MSD and Delhi Township, relates to the Delhi Town Square project. The board's been briefed on this previously. This is essentially to allow the township to create temporary wastewater treatment facilities in advance of their capacity in the township to accept flow from the Delhi Town Square project. This is critical to allowing, the capacity in this case is critical to allowing this multi-use economic development project to open and come online in the first quarter, early second quarter of next year. So the administration recommends the passage of the intergovernmental agreement. I do want to thank all the parties who've worked together on this, county administration, folks over at MSD. Skylar Miller is the township administrator with Delhi. He's here with us today. If there's any questions, I know I saw Lauren come in the room as well back there. So if there's any questions, I think all the parties are in agreement on this. It's, the facilities themselves are being funded by Delhi Township as part of the construction project out there, and when, in fact, capacity is available, they will then tap into the MSD system. That's the plan at least. But at this point, Commissioners, I'd open it up for any questions. And again, we have staff from MSD and also from the township here, if there are any questions on the project. I will just add that this is a project that the board has provided grant funds to in the past. I think we had a CDAP grant that went to this project, as well as a community revitalization grant as well, so the board does have a vested interest in the economic development project itself.
Great, thank you. Commissioner, any questions?
No questions, just a comment. We've thoroughly reviewed this item, so I have no questions as it relates to this.
Thank you. And Mr. Miller, I know you're here. Would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Commissioners. On behalf of Delhi Township, I just want to thank all of you for your continued support on this economic development project. Delhi Town Square represents roughly $65 million in investment on the west side, specifically on Delhi Pike. This is a public-partnership development, mixed use, which I, again, be a huge benefit to our community and the west side as a whole. We are truly grateful for the support that the Commissioners have shown throughout the entirety of this project, and especially now as we're trying to address these challenges. The Administrator's Office has been a huge help in facilitating this temporary solution until MSD can provide us with that sewer capacity. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. All right, I'm going to move that we approve of byleave number three.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And byleave number four is an adjustment to the table of organization. This adds a material repair worker, I'm sorry, a full-time maintenance repair worker to position. This is, we're bringing this forward earlier than we had anticipated. This was a position that we were initially anticipating would be a part of the table of organization to serve as the maintenance person out at the new combined 911 EMA facility. However, as Juvenile Court is in the process of scoping out a new program for the Hillcrest facility, and as the contract with Right of Passage ends, there will be the need for maintenance work out at that particular facility. So this adds that capacity to the table of organization so we can do some interim maintenance out at the Right of Passage facility. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions?
No questions.
No questions, so I'm going to move to approve of byleave number four.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
No further byleaves, Commissioners.
All right, we're going to move into the public hearing in that case. It's a hearing to consider zone change Green 2023-02 Skybridge Apartments' major revision to an existing Double D Planned Multiple Resident District. And so we've got Nathan Baker here from Planning and Development to get us up to speed on the project. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So this is a major revision request to an existing Double D Plans Multiple District. The purpose is to construct five new apartment buildings with a combined total of 190 new units and a community building. So the area, the site is located in Greentownship along Harrison Avenue, just east of the Coles and Meyer site. And the area that is being proposed to change is highlighted in the, with the white stars. So the site is approximately 23 acres and currently has 116 apartment units, and the proposal is to construct 190 new units. And then here is a view of the northernmost star looking north and northeast. And then here's a view looking at the southernmost star looking north and looking north. So zone changes go through a process in the state of Ohio laid out by the Ohio Revised Code. And the first step in this is for a public review, staff review conference, which was held in December of 2022. Staff then reviewed the project and recommended approval. The RPC reviewed and recommended approval with a vote of six to zero. And then the RZC recommended approval with a vote of five with one abstention. And we have also received communication from Greentownship recommending approval of the project as well. So that ends my summarization. I'm available for questions. Try to answer anything you might have.
So I have a question for you related to the public participation. As this went through with the public comment and the public hearings, was there any opposition to the project?
So during the staff review conference, there was several residents in attendance with concerns regarding traffic. But there have not been any residents in opposition since then.
Thank you. And I think we have someone here from Greentownship, do we not?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so Commissioner Dumas, I'm going to ask you if you have anything to add, and then I'm going to call up the folks from Greentownship.
Sure. You were talking about the traffic opposition. So what did we do about that? Did we try to make some concessions or what?
So I do understand that the engineer, the county engineer is going to require a traffic analysis.
Okay.
Study.
Okay. And then you indicated there was one abstention on one of the votes, and was that due to conflict of interest or what?
I believe so, yeah. There was a, one of the Commissioners is, works for the company that is doing the engineer work.
Okay. And I also saw very quickly a private sewer system that someone has. How is that going to be impacted at all?
So yes, there is currently a private treatment plant, which actually was pictured in the presentation, and that would be removed, and they are planning on constructing a private lifts, or a lift pump, and it would connect to MSD and public sewer, and they do have conditional approval from MSD already.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Frank Gurkanauer to come forward. He is from Greentownship. Or Adam, Adam Getzmann. I can't see either one of you, so I hear you're in the room, so come on forward.
Adam Getzmann, Greentownship Development Director. The trustees did review this matter at a public meeting in June. And so there were a couple of residents in attendance at that meeting. There was some discussion among the developer, as well as the neighboring property owners, about traffic. And there was kind of an agreement that there will be a traffic impact study required by the county engineer, and then that in residence of the existing condominium, adjacent condominium, be working with the developer as the project moves forward in the process. There's some light timing and ingress and egress off of Harrison Avenue. It's all private roads. So it'll be kind of an internalized matter that'll be handled through the TIS, Traffic Impact Study, and then negotiations and discussions among the existing property owners.
And what kind of housing is being built?
Rental apartments for, it's kind of a continuation of, there's an existing rental project there, and this is kind of an additional new phase, more modern apartments with amenities.
A lot going on in Greentownship. We do a lot of this for Greentownship. It's good news, right? We are increasing the housing stock. Can we get back to the map that showed the ingress, egress? So just so we have a better idea of what we're talking about related to the traffic. And the county engineers here as well, and Eric, we'll call you up in a second for the other item that's on the agenda. But if you have anything to add, please do. But yeah, what are we talking about by way of ingress, egress here?
So the public road that this is ingress and egress off of is Harrison Avenue, which is kind of main thoroughfare in Greentownship. There's a, there is a signalized intersection at Blue Sky Drive and Eagles Nest Drive. So that does provide signal access to this development. The project, as was pointed out, Nathan, it's on the two stars, so it surrounds an existing condominium and apartment project. So there are, there's a small retail shopping center that also accesses the traffic light. So we are looking at signalized ingress and egress onto Harrison Avenue for private property.
Is that?
It's kind of internal. I mean, I guess I'd argue that the, that the, very, and Mr. Beck will be able to answer the impact on the public roadway network. But to the best of my knowledge, some of the concerns associated are kind of this general volume on Harrison, and that's what the county engineer's emphasis is, look at, to make sure that this doesn't burden Harrison Avenue in an undue manner.
I see. So the only point of ingress, egress then is that one intersection at Harrison?
If there is a secondary means of emergency ingress and egress through an adjacent, there's that, I don't know if this pointer works. This one? Will it work on the, oh, okay. This is a, an office complex, and there is an emergency ingress and egress on the, from the, that provides access to Harrison Avenue through both an existing curb cut to the office building, and then the office building is connected to the adjacent retail. So from an emergency perspective, we have great access, and our fire department has reviewed the project and feels very comfortable with their ability to serve the entire development.
Commissioner, any questions?
No questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information. I assume our next step here is to close the hearing. Where did we go? Yep.
Yes, that would be the next step, and we would have the draft resolution by the August 10th meeting.
Okay. All right, I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll look forward to that. Okay. Let's move on to our regular agenda. Item number one is the county engineer. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Before I do my item, I just wanted to point out that this afternoon at 3 o'clock, Kentucky and Ohio will be having a press conference to announce the contractor selection for the Brent Spence Bridge project. So that will be made public this afternoon.
Nice, very good. And it's worth noting that you're the person from the county that's sitting at that table.
Yes, that is correct.
For your willingness to do that, Eric.
Yeah, you're welcome. Just one item is a resolution authorizing the county engineer to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission Emergency Fund for Gosling Road landslide. This is a formality at this point because we've already applied, and we were successful in getting a 90% match for this emergency roadwork. The engineer's estimate is $825,000. We have been verbally told that we will be getting $742,500 from the OPWC Emergency Fund to get this repaired done. The road currently has one lane closed due to a landslide, and that's how we were able to expedite this. And I appreciate the hard work of my staff making this happen.
Can you tell me, I don't, I'm not as familiar with Gosling Road?
It's on the west side off of Day Road. It's, is that Crosby Township, I believe? Yes, Colrain Township.
Colrain Township, okay, great, thank you. Any questions, Commissioners?
Well, I was just thinking what you said about a 90% match, and so how were we able to get that large number?
OPWC, when they issue grants, the local jurisdiction only has to put in 10%. Typically, on the regular grants, it's competitive process, so we typically put a bigger match in than 10% so that we have a better chance to get funded. This is emergency funds. There's no rating process. It just goes straight to OPWC. If they have money, they grant it if it's an emergency.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Fine, great, thank you. Looks good, and I'm going to move to approve of item number one.
Second, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. We'll look forward to the announcement later on. It's great news.
Unless you want to tell us now.
Well, yeah, so it makes it worth it for the press, whoever's tuning in. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. I'm going to turn it over to Administrator Aludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll just go through these very quickly. The consent agenda, item number two is the auditor's statement of financial transactions for the month of June. Item number three is a resolution updating the membership on the One Ohio Region Two, appointing Regional Two Foundation Governance Board. That's appointing Pastor Sil Watkins to the board. Item number four is a budget adjustment of $1.4 million appropriating various grants to the prosecutor's office, environmental services, probation, the coroner's office, as well as some engineer projects out in Sims, Sycamore, Columbia, Miami, and Springfield Townships. We have the actions of the purchasing director for the month of June. We have the purchase of a Dodge Durango for the sheriff's office for $37,941. Purchased of a Ford Explorer for the sheriff's office at $35,853. We have the resolution authorizing the award of ITB 036-23. This is $455,000 to John P. Tumlin and Sons. This relates to the warehouse door and ramp renovation for EMA's warehouse facility in Forest Park. Item number nine is awarding the ITB 055-23. This relates to year two of four of speaker replacements at a Great American Ballpark, and this is being awarded to, let's see, I don't have the name of the company. Hold on one second here. New Tech, that's right. This is to New Tech. Item number 10 is authorizing the ITB and the execution of an agreement between Debra Kemple and the Board of County Commissioners. This is $261,467 related to prevent a maintenance on the Justice Center's security system, which monitors the doors from various control monitoring positions in the Justice Center. We have item 11, which is approving and journalizing the collective bargaining agreement with ASME Local 1093, representing the planning and development field operations personnel. We have several job and family services agreements. The first is for $25,000. It's a consulting agreement related to Medicaid laws impacting children services clients. We have an agreement with Specialized Alternatives Families and Youth, SAFY, for family preservation services for $200,000. We have an agreement with SJO Kids, doing business as New Path, an agreement related to independent living services for $500,000. We have, item number 15 is the Hamilton County Juvenile Court's 2022 Annual Report. Item 16 is a resolution authorizing a home project agreement. These are two home assisted units in Paddock Hills for $100,000. The board previously heard an update on this project at a prior staff meeting. We also have item number 17, zoning map amendment for Case Green 2023-02. This is Crosstown Medical. This is essentially the approval resolution for the, related to the public hearing that the board had on July 13th. We have item number 18, which is a credit card authorization for the sheriff's office. Item 19, credit card authorization for the sheriff's office as well. These are for different purposes. Some are related to travel, some are related to prisoner transport and security. And item number 20 is also a credit card authorization for the sheriff for fuel, oil, and lubricants. Item number 21 is the treasurer's investment report. And item number 22 is the request for authorization to travel at the county's expense. This is two employees of the coroner's office to Detroit, Michigan, and that completes the consent agenda, Commissioners.
Very good. Just a couple of things. Item number three is related to the One Ohio Region Two Recovery Foundation Governance Board. And I just want to thank Pastor Sil Watkins for stepping up and being willing to serve on that board. We have been a little bit challenged by quorum because some of the seats weren't full. So I think this gets us to the full complement and will help us proceed with the work of One Ohio. So thanks to Pastor Watkins. Couple of other ones. Item number nine talks about some of the improvements that we're doing at Great American Ballpark. Just wanted to highlight this because we periodically have in front of us resolutions that allow us to do improvements to both Great American Ballpark and Paycor Stadium. And I don't think they always get the attention maybe that they deserve. As we move into negotiations with the Bengals in particular, and know that they are our partners in making sure that stadium is adequate, maintained well, and responds to the desires of the public for certain kinds of amenities, we are in partnership with the Bengals in making that happen. And so this is an example of us doing something at the baseball park. We also do this kind of thing at the football park. And so while we don't make a huge deal of it, these do roll through periodically. And I just want to make sure that people understand that the county is continuously investing in these assets because after all, these are taxpayer assets. They belong to the people of Hamilton County, and it is our responsibility to make sure that they're kept up well and serving the purpose. So just wanted to highlight that. And then lastly, item number 10, this is another one where we are investing in the Justice Center. These also are ongoing investments. We've done investments with locks and windows and elevators and security systems. And so once again, I think sometimes they roll through on the consent agenda and are not given sometimes the attention they deserve. So I did want to highlight item number 10, continued investment in the Justice Center to make sure that that is a safe environment, both for the workers, the deputies that are in that facility, and the inmates that are in that facility. So I just wanted to, and I think I'm going to continue to do that as these things. So I just wanted to, and I think I'm going to continue to do that as these things come before the board, continue to highlight some of these major investments that we're making in public facilities. And that's all I've got. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Madam Chair, it's really, really important to highlight those areas that you mentioned. I just wanted to mention one other item, item 11 under Human Resources, and thank our staff, the collective bargaining agreement that was established, thank our staff for working so hard to make that happen, and also the labor unions who work together in partnership and collaboration. Collective agreements are not easy. They take time and consideration and understanding to make sure that the employees get what they need, and also that we get what we need from the employees. So I just want to, I see Frank is here. Thank Frank, our Director of Human Resources, but it goes unsaid how hard they've been working. So that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. So I will move that we accept and/or receive for the record items two through 22.
Second. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
I was, I'm waiting for the third. Okay, thank you. There's nothing else on the agenda? Administrator, is there anything else? Commissioner Dumas, do we have anything else?
I have nothing.
All right, in that case, I will move to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.